Suzanne.
Good morning.
Good morning. I know how you say, I know how you get the time. Okay, all right, again, we have to, I wanted to thank you all for attending our meeting this morning. This is the meeting of the Norfolk redevelopment housing authority committee. I'm gonna call us, uh, to, uh, call us to, uh, attention and assembly here and open our meeting. If I can get them to attend to and open my, uh, that's the meeting. Okay, so, uh, first thing up is approval of last meeting minutes, um, the meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, and, uh, let us, uh, call Roe for approval or disapproval of the minutes of last meeting.
I approve.
I second the approval.
Move in seven. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Casa Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Next item up is, uh, public comments, in which case, uh, we're gonna check to see if we have any public comments this morning. Any public comments this morning?
At this time, we have no public comments online. Neither do we have anything in the chat, but I'll check the hallway just.
All right, and we, as, as always, we'll remember that our public comments are restricted or limited to, uh, three minutes. We're gonna be disciplined, keepers of time, and, uh, and, uh, hold them to that, uh, a lot of times, so that we don't, uh, get overboard in, uh, managing our business here, so, uh, let's be cognizant of that. We have, uh, a couple of commissioners out this morning. Uh, I assume, uh, Ms. Shavinsky will be in. She didn't call me, and, uh, I haven't heard from her, so I'm assuming she'll be in. I know Dr. Smith would not be in, uh, but he did inform me that he would be out of town with his wife, at which time, uh, she was interested in seeing if we, uh, if he could, uh, make dial in, and, uh, there's no anticipation effort for him, but I think it's, uh, honorable that he wants to at least hear what we're doing, so, uh, we're gonna get him dialed in, so he can hear us, even though there won't be any need, cause, or time for action, or, uh, specific comment.
At this time, we have no in-person comments or.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have a resolution now that will be presented by our executive director, Mr. Nathan Sims. I think he's gonna be delivering a resolution, or maybe not. He deserves to get the talk. In the meantime, while we're here, uh, talking, uh, I wanted to, uh, say how much I appreciate, uh, contribution and commitments of, uh, the commissioners on this board, wherever I've had the occasion to, uh, ask one of you to join me in something, effort, some effort I was at, you would jump into the task, and I really appreciate it. All right, Nathan, you're up.
Yes, sir, good morning. I'm Jerry Roderick, thank you. All right, so, uh, today I have, uh, I wanna say distinct pleasure, but I, which it is, but it's, uh, obviously with a degree of, uh, uh, of sadness, a resolution of gratitude, um, for our own, uh, Rose Marie Arrington, for her services rendered as the commissioner of the Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority.
Oh.
Uh, Rose Marie Arrington has served as a member of the board of commissioners of the Norfolk redevelopment and housing authority, uh, since Jan-, uh, July, excuse me, twenty fourth of two thousand and twelve. Throughout her tenure on the board, Ms. Arrington has demonstrated unwavering support, uh, for the authority's mission of providing decent, safe, affordable housing, as well as related essential services for the citizens of Norfolk. Whereas Ms. Arrington has served as a passionate advocate, which is true, uh, for the residents of NRHA's public housing communities, as well as our housing choice voucher communities as well, voucher partners, uh, has been a tireless voice, uh, for equitable treatment of all residents, regardless of race, age, gender, or economic circumstances. Whereas Ms. Arrington has been a strong supporter of resident services and initiatives,
Yes.
particularly educational and recreational activities for children residing in NRHA's communities, workforce development, and training for low-income residents, and programs for senior citizens, both through her service on the board and through her work as the president of Digstown Tenant Management Corporation. Whereas Ms. Arrington is personal experience as a resident of public housing, and more recently a voucher holder. Her lifelong work as a community advocate and her unwavering commitment to justice have provided tremendous insight into the concerns of residents and challenges facing the authority. Whereas Ms. Arrington brought valuable understanding, wisdom, and awareness to the board, and she is, and she was instrumental and continues to be instrumental in assisting the board, uh, to better recognize the impact of NRHA's initiatives on the needs of NRHA's, uh, residents, and whereas Ms. Arrington has consistently carried out her responsibility as a commissioner with dedication, perseverance, and compassion. Whereas Ms. Arrington has consistently carried out her responsibility, oh, sorry, now therefore, be it resolved, uh, that we, or you, uh, the commissioners of the authority, do hereby take this opportunity to express your sincere and our sincere gratitude as NRHA staff for Ms. Arrington's service to the authority and her many contributions to the board and the residents of Norfolk for the, for the, over the years. But it be further resolved that the chairman of the board of the authority is hereby, I'm not gonna direct you, because you're my boss, but I'm gonna encourage that, uh, directors provide a copy of the resolution to Ms. Arrington, which we will provide you with, and a copy of said resolution to be placed on record in the office of the authority, uh, on this day adopted on the eleventh day of April, two thousand and twenty four.
All right. So, everybody, thank you. I would say, for nothing, you have been outstanding commissioner, advocating when you felt the need to, uh, standing with the team when you knew it was the right thing to do, standing in face of comments and opposition, uh, presenting, uh, when times of challenge came without concern or interest for your own self-protection. You've been an outstanding commissioner, and, uh, I personally am very, very, uh, not just supportive, but pleased with the time that I've had to serve with you, so congratulations.
Thank you, Suzanne.
All right.
Can we vote?
Pick up one, but I don't think you would mind, if you're clapping again.
Well, you want to take the, I don't know, take the vote and then we'll give you some.
Oh, yes.
Vote for the past representative.
Okay.
Move in seven.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Conyers?
Aye.
Mr. Freely?
Aye.
Mr. Casa Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Aye, and the resolution is, uh, fast and committed to Ms. Rose Arrington. Thank you, yes.
I wanna thank each and every one of you and everyone that I have met and had time since I've been on here. I have grown and I have known so many people and met in all walks of life, and I'm glad that I listened to God when he told me to take that path, because I didn't see where I was going. And I love each and every one of you, and if y'all still need some advice, do call me. I love you all, and y'all take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it is going back to center this morning, uh, and we appreciate and value that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, stay tuned for part two. We got, we got, we got something else to do.
I got my hair. My daughter, bro.
Oh, wow, that is so sweet.
All right, thank you, dear, all right. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, he's already ahead of me. So, Scott Font, present our budget.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, I'd like, with your permission, to switch the order up, so that we can get Mr. Jump, um, in first to do the audit presentation, uh, and then we'll jump back to the budget, so we'll look back and then we'll look ahead. The, the audit, uh, presentation he will present, uh, has been laid in front of you. He has provided the PowerPoint. Those of you who've been with us for a few years are familiar with this presentation, um, and he will, he will present that, and then I'll go into a couple of things about the audit report, just so that you know. The committee, we did talk about the audit at length, uh, at, in the committee meeting. Mr. Jump also presented, although we had a bit of a team's issue there, we could hear him, but him, not us, so we did, uh, but we, but we did hear his presentation, and, uh, any questions the committee had, then we talked about after that meeting, and then got those questions, questions answered. So, um, without any further delay, I'll introduce Don Jump, who is the managing partner of Junk Perry and Company. Um, Don's firm is out of, uh, Tom's River, New Jersey. They have a specialized practices, uh, specialized practice where they audit school boards and housing authorities, so, uh, you know, we are in, uh, his functional area, and, and they have a great deal of expertise with housing programs. So, Don, if you wanna do your presentation?
Thank you, Scott. Good, good morning, everyone. Uh, I assume everybody can hear me. The, uh, the presentation on the screen, and I believe you all have a copy in your, in your package, so, what I wanna do this morning is just a summary of the reporting package for, for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three. It's, it's a hundred and forty-six pages, so I just wanna try to make it simpler and go through the package in a, in a summary form. So, we can go to page two, the table of contents for what I'm gonna do today, is just discuss the auditors' reports, which is the most important thing to me, obviously, an overview of the entire package, uh, who's responsible for what in an audit, some financial statement audit risk and, and our focus, financial disclosures, uh, what, what the governmental audit reports mean, including the one on uniform guidance. Uh, we did have one finding, which I'll get into later, and then some, uh, wrap it up with some additional required communication, and a look at the future in terms of, uh, GASB statements coming down the road. So, if you go to page three, again, as I said, the most important thing to me are the auditors' reports, and there's, there's only five reports in here. The, the first three are the most important. Uh, there's two audits actually going on when we come in. We first audit the financial statements, and that's what the first report's gonna be about, but we'll look at that in a minute. And then we also do, because you're, you're a governmental entity, uh, we, we do a governmental audit in terms of looking at, uh, controls over financial statements and also compliance with, uh, general laws and regulations. And then lastly, because you receive federal funding, we do a uniform guidance report on the federal awards, and that, that requires us testing compliance with programs, as well as internal control to those compliance. And then the last two are just reporting on something called the FDS, which is the Financial Data Schedule that we have to submit to HUD, that then agrees that to the actual financial statements, and then just an agreed-upon procedures report. So, if we, if we can move on to page four, uh, that hundred and forty-six page package, which I talked about, the overview of that is the auditors' reports, uh, on the financials, which we mentioned. Probably the most germane thing to the board is management discussion and analysis, because that's a year-over-year comparison of, uh, the authority's statement of financial position, as well as the changes in the statement of financial position, prepared by management with explanation. So, if there's one area you might wanna focus on, it would be that. Then we have the financial statements themselves, and including all of the footnotes, and then the required reporting, as I, as I mentioned earlier, for uniform guidance and, and generally accepted governmental, uh, uh, accounting standards. And then lastly, supplemental information, which is mostly that financial data schedule that, that I mentioned. So, if you, if you go to page five, so who's responsible for what in an audit? And this is the financial statement audit part, but it also relates to the, to the other reports as well. So, management has certain responsibilities. Management is responsibility, is responsible for actually preparing the financials, and including the disclosures that are, that are in the footnotes. Management's responsible for designing controls to maintain that these financials are really free of material misstatement, whether by error or by fraud. And then also, management has to provide access to us, the auditors, to look at anything we wanna look at, have, management has to comply with laws and regs, and at the end of the audit, management provides us with written representations as to, as to all of the above. If you go to the next slide, six, uh, management and the board also share some responsibility. Both management and the board are responsible to develop a culture of honesty and ethical standards, uh, make sure that authority's, uh, operations comply with laws and regulations, and that the financial reporting complies with laws and regulations. And then a board, of course, has oversight for all of this, oversight for the reporting process, oversight for internal control, and oversight of management regarding the actual federal programs and the controls, uh, within those programs. So, then if you go to seven, we found to get to what my responsibilities are. So, I have to express an opinion, in this case, in the first report, on the financial statements, that they in fact conform with generally accepted, uh, uh, accounting principles and, and the fairness of the supplementary information, and, and they do, so that's a positive opinion. I also opine on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with provision of laws, regs, et cetera, and internal control over compliance and actual compliance for the major programs. In order to do that, I have to look at things. I have to perform procedures, which is obtaining evidence to support the financial statement amounts, disclosures, uh, in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as governmental audit standards. Then I also have to test compliance with laws, regulations, and agreements, and lastly, test compliance with the major programs, including internal control over those compliance amounts. And then lastly, my responsibility is communicate these things to the board and to what I'm doing now. And if you go to the next slide, uh, so when we look at the financial statements, we try to focus on audit risk and, and audit focus areas. So, there's always a risk of management override, we have numerous procedures to, to test for that, and then overall, on a, on a numbers basis, there, there's a risk of over or understatement of financial statement items with significant estimates. Our audit focus areas this year was in the HUD grants, which is obviously the vast majority of your revenue, leases receivable, which was introduced last year, was a change in, and, and, and accounting that was implemented in June of twenty-two, actually, and then notes receivable, and then pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. These were our audit focus areas. If you go to slide, if, if you, if you're looking at your financial statement disclosures, there's, there's many pages of disclosures. These are some of the key areas you might wanna look at. If you're looking at footnotes, the first footnote is, is accounting policies, and that just describes to you all of the different policies that the, uh, uh, authority follows in note one A through note one Y, and also details component units, uh, both blended and discrete component units within the authority. Note one Y also briefly describes a change in accounting principles, although it had no impact this year, and that was just some, uh, a new GASB on subscription-based information technology, uh, then notes receivable, note three, pension and, and, uh, other post-employment benefit liabilities, which are pretty extensive footnotes, and then, uh, lastly, uh, of importance, uh, lease receivable footnote, which is quite detailed as well. So, then if we go to page ten, uh, just quickly, that second report we talked about, uh, internal control, uh, over financial reporting, we look for deficiencies, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, I happy to say there were none noted. Then we go to the third report. Now, the third report is referred to as the uniform guidance report, and that's where we select a major program, uh, and we change it every year. So, the, this past year, the major programs that we looked at were housing choice voucher programs. They constituted about forty-four point four million of revenue that you received from HUD, whereas all the major programs constituted seventy-six point two million. So, when we look at this, we, we go into compliance, we look at, these are compliance requirements that HUD determines, not us. So, it's just activities allowed, allow the cost eligibility, reporting and special test. And then we also test the internal control over those compliance areas. So, there were no material weaknesses in control, internal control over compliance, but we did have a finding related to eligibility, and that resulted in a, a significant deficiency in internal control over compliance. I'll get to that in a minute. So, if you go to slide fourteen, uh, again, we, we selected housing choice vouchers, we do it on a sampling basis, we, one out of forty, and this may sound insignificant, but you have to remember, it's a, it's a sample, so it's a, it's a test basis, and it's a required finding. One out of forty was calculated incorrectly. What does that mean? It just means that the, you know, the subsidy is based on a person's income. See, first of all, you have to.
Can I interrupt you, sir?
Yes, sir.
I wanna interrupt you for a moment.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, yeah, I just wanna, uh, say to you, and, um, doing this at the risk of being scurged by my fellow commissioners here, but what I'd like to ask you to do is, uh, kind of give us, if you will, a summary of, uh, what we're looking at, or at least what, what, uh, the work that you've done, and, uh, and then, uh, if there's anything that really jumps out at you that we need to be aware of, direct us to that, but your, uh, your, uh, editorializing some of your comments, I think, may take us to a, uh, area of, uh, hearings that is a little longer than we wanna be, so, if you would, please endeavor to, you know, take us through, through the numbers, take us through the things that you and your team saw, and anything we need to know further. I don't wanna sound disrespectful, but, uh.
No, sir. And I understand, I'll speed it up, and I do only have two slides left, so I, 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 I think, I just wanted to explain this one, uh, this one finding, and, uh, it basically, uh, again, our recommendation is that you improve internal control with this area, and, uh, perhaps form second review of calculations, and then management does have a response, and that's, and that's really, that's really the, the only, uh, significant matter in here. These other required additional communications, everything, everything here is fine, and then next to the last slide, uh, there was some software issues, which I'm sure Scott has explained, with some lost data and a shutdown of, of your software for a while. And then lastly, I just wanna comment on the central office cost center, which previously had just crazy amount of detail in it, and the authority has taken significant steps to reduce that detail, which reduces errors, and that, that is, uh, expected to be completed by the end of this fiscal year. Very, very last slide, just some future, uh, GASB statements, uh, coming up, nothing to be concerned about, quite frankly. And with that, I just wanna thank Scott, I wanna thank, uh, all of the staff for all of their support and, and, and help during the audit process, and not just Scott's department, but all members of the authority, as we, as I said, when we were looking at housing choice vouchers, we had to deal with a lot of individuals, so before I enter, entertain any questions, just wanna thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jump.
Okay. Hey, Don, how are you? This is Commissioner Conyers. Um, kinda in the tune of what, um, Chair, uh, Alfonso Albert stated, like, uh, any of this, you're saying that there was only one major opportunity which came up in the eligibility process, um, as far as when you audited it, right? So, eligibility, you said, one out of forty subsidy were, uh, calculated incorrectly. What's the overall percentage, uh, of error, uh, what we'd be talking about, uh, over the, the larger number?
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to extrapolate that. Uh, I, I mean, just, give you an example, you have maybe fifty-five thousand individuals receiving housing choice vouchers, and again, this is just a, a, a standard auditing practice to sample, uh, you know, based on prior results, a relatively small sample. Typically, if something's gonna come up, it does come up. So, I, I, I wouldn't say this is, uh, I, it's impossible for me to tell you the total percentage that relates to all those vouchers. It's, it's just that, uh, it's easy to make mistakes, you have a lot of, uh, a lot of things to do, and what hap, what happens is, everybody's, everybody's income is updated once a year. So, in that process, the income goes in, the half subsidy is then calculated, and in one of the forty we looked at, one was incorrect, the other thirty-nine were absolute spot-on.
Okay, awesome. So, that, that was, that's the only thing that you're reporting, because it, it seems like one of the major things that you call out. Other than that, um, just from a layman's term, for, for some of us as well, just a clear understanding, there are no major findings that stuck out to you in your audit of our, uh, of our agency outside of what you've stated here?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, other than that, one, one item, everything was really in good shape.
Awesome. That's what I need.
Thank you, sir. We'll turn it back over to our CFO, Mr. Scott Font.
I would add one thing to that. Um, in, in the, when, when you read the report, you see that it says significant deficiency. That's an audit term, that doesn't mean it's a significant amount of money, and, and Don can, Don can thumbs up, up on that as well. Uh, I believe it was less than ten dollars.
Yeah, it, it was.
But it wasn't, but it was an error, so.
Six dollar a month difference.
Yeah. So, we just like to point that out, because it's not as though the program, there was a mistake made that was hundreds of thousands of dollars, but they, HUD defines that as a sufficient deficiency, significant deficiency over control, not over money. So, we, we've been working, handling this, we've been working very hard upon that to, to try and, to try and rectify that situation, but I just wanted to point that out.
Absolutely.
The word significant can be taken in different ways, so, just wanted to point that out. Uh, a couple of things in the report before I move on. Uh, Don pointed out management's discussion and analysis, I believe it starts on page four, that's what you wanna read. If, if you wanna read the audit report, um, have fun with all those hundred and forty pages, but there's, there's about twelve pages there that is actually NRHA's presentation of the numbers and the comparative year-over-year. Uh, HUD requires that any variance over ten percent, we explain. So, that's the, that's the piece of, that's the only piece of the single audit report now, uh, the way it's, the way it's done in two thousand and twenty-four, that actually points you to the last year and compares it. So, uh, that's, that's where I would, I would point you to read, if you wanna see about the audit report. And then the last thing, I always like to go on the record with this, if you look at the balance sheet, you will see, and I'm not even gonna point you to it, but I'm just gonna say it, just so it's on the record. Suzanne's smiling, she knows what I'm gonna say. You will see a number there that says unrestricted net position, and it's a hundred million dollars. That does not mean the agency has a hundred million dollars sitting in the bank that is unrestricted and ready to be used. That's an, that's an accounting term, that means that those are, are net position or are reserves which are not tied to fixed assets and are not restricted from the standpoint of a board action or certain programmatic action by HUD. So, your reserves in there include your public housing reserves, and as we've talked, they're unrestricted, except they're restricted, you can't use them in section eight. Section eight reserves can't be used for public housing, et cetera, and a lot of that net position represents the net of over-sixth debt that's on the books, going back to the Broad Creek properties and, and earlier, so that does not, for anyone listening or for anyone with the board, that does not indicate that, that there's a hundred million dollars of unrestricted money sitting around. So, I just like to put that on the record. And then also, I would like to thank your interim CFO, Kimberly Green, and her staff, specifically Clover Williams, for their assistance in this project. This was the hardest one in my six years here, because of what happened with the computers last fall. We basically had to start over again in, in mid-October, and it was a lot of work to get this done, so thanks to Don's team and, and my team, because we were able to get it into HUD on time. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As this, Don has overviewed and yourself have you done this audit, what grade would you give yourself and Don after these findings?
Well, the finding is programmatic, so it's not, it's not financial. So overall, you never want to see a finding. But this is not, this is not, to me, a finding of commission. This is just, it's simply just an error in a calculation, and it has to be pointed out. Now, it, it shouldn't happen, but we all make mistakes. And this is just an area where HUD has pointed us to look at these files. So I would, I would defer on a letter grade. The word significant makes it sound worse than it probably is. It's not something that's uncommon within housing authorities to see these files and have these calculation errors. It's just something that we, we try continually to tighten up with everything we do.
If you want to give yourself a letter grade-
No, it would, no, no, I really don't. I, I would, I would defer to my boss on that and let him, if he wanted to say-
No, you're leaving anyway. That doesn't matter, you know what I'm saying? So I mean, watch, no. No, you did good job.
No, I, I, I think, I give us all strong marks this year just for getting it done with the, with the computer system and the challenges we had last fall. It was, it was, it was a very difficult process. Yes, Kimberly, I mean, it was a very difficult process to just get this done. And, and it was a challenge. And that's where I think the agencies, go ahead, Don.
I just wanted to say, I, I think Scott and his team do a terrific job. They really do. And I think this year, as Scott said, with some of the difficulties that came up, created some timing issues. But overall, I think that the entire team does a terrific job. As you know, there's been a reduction of staff and I, I just feel like it was very, it was a job very well done.
Yeah, and for the record, the financial position of the agency is a solid A.
Oh, yes.
Solidly, an A. We, we have cash in the bank. We have some flexibility. And, you know, the financial position of this agency is extraordinarily up.
Mr. Perry?
John. John.
John. This is Commissioner Earl Frayley. And early on in the presentation, Scott introduced you as being a rich type of audit firm dealing with public housing agencies as well as school boards. In considering agencies of comparable size to us, how do our founding findings match up in your audit with the findings in similar sized audits?
Well, so in relation to other agencies and this particular finding is, even though it says significant deficiency, I, I really feel like it's rather insignificant. True findings modify opinions, though we didn't have to modify our opinion because we didn't have what's called a material weakness, meaning that, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be a lot of errors in this area. So I would say compared to other authorities, this authority does, again, does a very good job. Always have done a very good job on the financial side. And on the program side, I think is also, also does an incredible job. You know, this is the only type of finding we have found in the years that we've been doing the audit here. This one related strictly to Housing Choice vouchers. And as I mentioned, you have, I don't know, I think something like fifty-five thousand vouchers. So it, it, it's likely that there are going to be errors made. But, but compared, to answer your question, compared to other authorities, Norfolk does a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
There are no more questions regarding the audit. Any of Steve or our friends that performed the audit? Anybody? Thank you, sir. Mr. Jump?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work you've done and the way you've highlighted it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, anything else? We will keep taking that, Scott.
I can go? Thank you, Don. Thank you, Don.
All right, sir.
One more thing, if I can. Let's, let's look ahead now. McKees, if you can bring that budget presentation up. Yeah, just jump to the first page with the numbers, if you would. Should be, should be page four, there you go. So let's now look ahead. One of the things, as I packed up, we were tasked with getting this budget done a couple of months early. Nathan, I think appropriately wanted this done so that we could just kind of, they could start implementing this budget, getting it into the system and start moving and not have some kind of transition on trying to work through it. So Ron Ho, the budget manager's here, had a big, had a big piece of this, a big part of it as we completed it. One of the things that I'll leave you proudest of is that we got the administration of this agency out of using reserves on an annual basis. This budget, again, is about two hundred thousand dollars on the good side of using all of the discretionary revenue. I know that as we go forward, Mr. Sims' goal is not to use anywhere near the amount of reserve, of earnings that we're using now. But we had to cross that threshold to get it to where we weren't pulling reserves to pay salaries and benefits. Through hard work with Michael and years past, we crossed that bridge last year. And with the changes that we're making internally and with the forecasting that we're doing, we're still in that, in that position for twenty twenty-five. So I'm very, I'm very pleased to announce that. The committee, I want to thank the committee. We've worked hard on this over the past couple of months. The, the way the budget will proceed, we're going to go through this today for a little while. Next month, you will have a public hearing, which is required. Kimberly will present the public hearing. And then in June, at the regular meeting, not in a special meeting, but at the regular meeting in June, staff will recommend approval of the budget. But it will be the budget as presented today. We don't need to make any changes going forward. A budget, as you know, is a spending plan, and it's a plan that's done at a snapshot in time. Obviously, things change on a day-to-day basis, which can affect it. But the global picture of this budget is going to stay as it is right now. And I'm, so I'm going to go through a few things with you, basically on this page. I have a cover memo there explaining some things, but I want to go through this page and this page only. And then, you know, obviously be available to take anybody's questions, even going forward, you know, through, through Nathan, if that's, if that's requested by the commissioners. We have a couple of things that are going to be implemented next year that are adding to the expense lines, one of which, and the biggest of which, and the best of which, is a conversion on the computer system. That is, if you look at the first line about the Housing Choice voucher program, we very proudly got that in the black last year. And it's, and it's back in the red this time, but that is due to the Yardi implementation and increases in merit last summer for the, for the pay rates. So that is a one-time thing. HUD presented us with additional administrative fees this fiscal year that we've collected because of the growth in the program, which is to be commended from Pamela and her staff. And so that three hundred thousand dollars is basically money received this year being spent next year. So while it looks like a deficit, if you look at the program over a two-year period, it's still in the black. Okay, so I just wanted to point that out. And this is not that program sliding back into needing discretionary income to operate. It will be back, it'll be back on the, on the right side of things in fiscal twenty-six. But for fiscal twenty-five, because of the software system and some other one-time things.
All right, thank you very much. We're back on, on the record. And Mr. Pines will close us out in a second.
Okay. I want to point out a couple more things. You'll notice the long-term public housing area is, is at, is balanced. So that's, that's a big accomplishment as well. We are pulling one and point two-five million dollars from the capital fund, which is less than we can pull in order to balance those budgets. But that's, that's a normal procedure within housing authorities to pull that capital fund money for operations.
Moving down into central office, we have separated the deficits where, by funding. So we get the million dollars from the city, we show how we're spending that. Administrative operations, administrative operations includes rent on this building. So in addition to the four hundred ten thousand that we're covering, we have about seven hundred thousand in rent that we paid. So that, that, and it's highlighted in your memo about the total cost of the building. I want to conclude with, oh, specialized maintenance operations. You'll see, we have done a great job and finally stopped doing the maintenance billing. This is one of the things that Mr. Jump pointed out about our central office and the complexity of it. We stopped doing internal charges. And we have assigned those men and their tasks and ladies to individual property sites so that now those costs are directly charged to the public housing sites, which you'll notice are still in the, in, showing a net zero. The specialized maintenance operations you see there is solely the costs that are required to operate the building at nine-ten. So just so you know, we've stopped that. Why do we have three hundred thousand dollars? It's, it's the building at nine-ten. All right, so that, that's being worked through. And then finally, we had talked in previous meetings about setting up a development entity, if you will. We're, we're not going to do it in the, in the fact of a corporate entity or something separate, but there are going to be a separate set of books set up. What we, what we're asking for the board when we approve this budget is a seed of five hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars from our discretionary reserves into this area to solely fund pre-development costs on some of the initiatives that were gone over at the, at the developers forum and in other places. Upfront money is always needed for these tasks. You've got to pay architects, you've got to pay, you know, a, a project manager when they're hired, those sort of things. When funds are received back through these bonding deals, through developer fee, through sale of land, where allowable by HUD, they will go into that pot. And that, that small seed will end up tripling and quadrupling over time to where we will have the, we'll have the flexibility to continue doing these development projects and have a dedicated set of books within our, what's called business activities on our, on our, on our ledgers that is totally segregated for this task. So that charges in there will be approved by the executive director in all cases so that we know how that money is being spent. And then that going forward, Kimberly, I'm assigning you work while we're standing here. But beginning in July, that will be something that will be in your monthly financial packet about where we stand with that money, how much has been spent and how much is out there. Okay?
Yeah, I noticed Scott, I noticed you guys in the literature said there'll be a development fee associated with that T money once this expires.
Yes.
Is that going to be a reoccurring, they're going to be a reoccurring fund that will continue keeping the pot and just pay the disbursement back for the-
Yeah.
Discretionary-
Yeah. As we talked about it, his goal in mind before I decided to, you know, take my leave of it though. But when, when we first discussed this over the, over the winter, what did we think? We might seed it with two million dollars? And, and we set a rough goal of turning that two million into ten within seven to ten years. So, yeah, the idea is not just to pay it back. The idea is that it is a seed for development activities to keep this agency running, running whole and, and running in the, in the direction that we want it to run going forward. So that, you know, the seed needed, that comes from actual costs that are budgeted to be expended next year. And it's not nearly as much as we, as we thought we were going to ask for because we think there's going to be some return rather quickly. At least within the next fiscal year, there should be some return there. Oh, and so you know that, I'm sorry, so when, when the bond fees are received that we talked about with these bond issuances, they go in there.
Okay.
They go in there to help with this effort. Yes, sir.
Is there a, some sort of business plan or at least like an outline and sketch of, of the ROI that you're expecting from it or is it just?
No, not necessarily. The first thing that we have to do, and we worked with a strategic planning consultant yesterday, was to come up with a development schedule. And that's what they've been working through with the, with the forum to say, what's first? What's next? What's next? What's next? And then I'm sure performers will be sent out.
But that ten X return is, is a hope, a desire, but it's based on-
Oh, yeah, yeah, because we yeah, we have we have some, we have some thought about what land sales can generate, and we have some thought about what developer fee from renovation of the mid rises can generate. So we just have to control the outs and then and then be able to be able to quantify the I think it is, yeah, seven to ten years is the realistic timeline. You will see a line there that says HRV. Just to clarify what that is, that is the funds that we have received from HRV. And it covers the cost of Mr. Norman's staff where grants fall short so that we can continue those fine activities irrespective of of grant funding. We're very lucky in this case to have that available source. So if we are approved for a what's called a family self-sufficiency or resident opportunity for self-sufficiency, Ross Grant, if we receive one of those two, those grants funds will replace some of the HRV money. And then the HRV money can be used elsewhere or just held back for the next time that it's needed. But I just wanted to point that out to you what that meant. Because I thought I thought it important that we that we highlight what that what that source is.
There's some grants that have been submitted already for that shortfall that that we talked about a grant, whether it was Ross Grant or FSS.
Not not for not for the current. The only one we put in for thus far has been the youth field grant with the with the Department of Labor, the FSS grant and the the FSS grant and the Ross grant hasn't come up yet.
Yeah, they're coming up.
Yeah, they'll be coming up soon.
And when you you'll know something about the whether or not the youth field grant.
Should be soon. That's spring. So.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully any moment.
And that it was important amount was that the youth field.
One point five million.
One point five.
Okay, yeah, that that concludes. Again, you'll have a I'll take any questions. And then just to again, outline, there'll be a public hearing next month. And then this budget will come before the board in June for approval.
Sound good. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for all this you're doing, all this you've done in helping the government and housing authority maintain a status. That is one of the things that many authorities in the state. Mr. Sam, I wanted to ask you before you go.
Is it possible for us to make available maybe an hour or forty minutes time for one of our finance people to be on the phone in Zoom, on a Zoom call, right here in the boardroom, to just kind of walk us through some acronyms and, you know, nicknames and give us a program? So if you don't do this every day, you know.
We do it every day.
And I have to say I would add to that. I think I don't know who could do this, because it would be horrible. But I think we need an acronym dictionary. I mean, I'm really pretty fluent in acronyms and there are things in terms of what the heck is. And so, you know, in someone's spare time, maybe they can just start to question on a compendium of, I mean, and as we bring the board members on, it's their ability to, you know, or it's my ability.
Yeah, no, yes, we'd be happy.
And it's going a long way toward is how we respond to some of the things that are presented or done. We have a financial chief financial officer that has demonstrated the quality of his service and and the and the product he produces in his budgets and financial. But I know that a lot of times people will be kind of overcome with information that they don't understand. But they won't say it. They don't want anybody to know they didn't understand something. So I think it would help a long way to kind of broaden our life. So.
Mr. Sam, if you allow me, I'm not embarrassed to say that I don't know stuff. But I I had occasion, I was reading some of our materials, I think Scott had provided to us before, came across an acronym.
Right.
And I'm reasonably fluent in acronyms myself. This one I didn't know. The acronym was BNO for my advantage, what from my perspective, what is that, big night out? What does that mean? Scott clarified that for me. And the amazing thing about that is these acronyms can distort what you're trying to comprehend. If you don't understand exactly what they mean.
What is BNO? Scott?
BNO is is a is one of the segments of our general ledger account coding. It's called broad national objective. So that's one that.
Broad national objective.
Yeah, that was that was a segment of the account number that was used in the past when we were doing a lot of active CDVG work.
Oh, it's a cool term.
Meeting in Valmont.
Yeah.
All right. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Appreciate everyone's time this morning. And so there was a lot of information going through through Scott's presentation as well as Mr. Jump. What I wanted to do was kind of start out by really kind of giving kind of a little bit of a reflection of where we've been. And so as everyone knows, pretty much in this room, we lost a member of our team a few weeks ago. And so for those who didn't remember Leslie Hannah, she came, we we politely asked her to present the information on occupancy. And she she came in with her very soft voice, but came hard with facts. And so and that's generally how she has operated. And so since that day, there really has been, the organization really has been different. And so I'd say that as really kind of a remembrance of her and the work that she has done as, you know, as part of our organization and what she has meant to us as a family. And so we're continuing to work through that. I think we're on the other side of the the initial shock. I think there's still a lot of a lot of grief, but we are supporting one another. And so I want to thank quite a few people who have done that, Mike Clark being one of them, Karen Rose being another, Chuck James Bowden being another person as well, Pamela being one of them too. Just a lot of different people joining up, a lot of different folks in this room, a lot of folks in this organization, Julia, who dispersed our brief counselors in a split notice in the morning. And so it's been it's been difficult. But we are really, as we move through the process, I think there's a ton of memories that we all kind of reflected on. And that's her legacy as part of this organization. And so I wanted to just take a moment to to recognize that. And I would say, as we continue to move through this process, check with one another. And what I've said to the organization, because often in grief, we do this, you know, we try to push on. And so and we are pushing on and we thank our clients that we have served who have been flexible in terms of when we have to reschedule and do things. And they understand that the staff is going through things. But, you know, we I've said to our team that it's okay not being okay, because that is not easy. And that is something that we all have to kind of, you know, process in our own in our own way. So we're going to continue to do that. We're going to continue to support our occupancy group, because that's the right, that's the right thing to do. And so, you know, that's that's kind of where we are. So please continue to keep the organization and Leslie family in your prayers. The other part I wanted to talk about was the Scott talked about the the budget. And so I'm excited about the budget for a number of different reasons, because I think it really presents the puts the organization in a really good position. It shows that we're listening. It shows that we're doing a lot of different things and we're really focused. And so some of the things highlight of the budget that we are proposing is not only just the development patient moving that forward, because that is very much important. We have an old housing stock. There is there's nothing efficient about it. People do not like it. And but we but it is affordable housing for the city. And we are trying to make sure that we preserve that where we can. We have other issues that we're trying to incorporate as part of our housing, meaning having more rooftops that support economic activities and include grocery stores and other types of amenities. So we have a we have a balancing act to do. And so we're obviously focused on that in terms of making sure that Steve and his department have the resources they need to do what they need to do. Steve talked about the developer forum and all of that. But I think that's a preview in terms of the things that we expect to do going forward. The other part of that is is about the program. And so we've heard from from everybody, we've listened to everybody. We understand that there is a tough, there's a tough road in terms of individuals with vouchers to find housing. This budget includes funding for search assistance. This budget includes additional resources to help with an additional most deposit security deposit. It helps us in terms of creating a asset protection program, which is really a sinking fund for landlords who are interested in joining the program, who may be hesitant on the fence, because often when people talk about the voucher program, the first thing they go to and say is, what if they tear up my unit or this, that, and the other? That rarely happens, rarely, to be clear. But we're putting a fund aside to do that, to create a fund that will go anything beyond normal wear and tear, similar to like an insurance fund, anything beyond normal wear and tear up to do thousand dollars. So we're working through through the particulars around that. Going to try to make the inspection process a lot easier. We're going to do that. We're going to try to recruit a lot more landlords and developers, because that part is very much important. So we're focused on these different pieces. Why? Because it matters. We're talking through with client services and making sure they have the resources that they need and that everybody is interwoven. Because I want everybody to kind of understand that this summer and going forward, we're out in the community. We're doing a lot of community engagement. We have a lot of different things to do. A lot of things fall on our shoulders. They do rightly or wrongly. They 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 fall on our shoulders. And we're going to continue to work through that through engagement. So whether it's engagement in terms of transformation of our communities, because we are going to transform our community. That's clear. What's your status and where you are? How can we help moving forward? That's where we are. The other piece of that is trying to make sure that we are assessing our residents the best way that we can throughout this process. There's a lot of misinformation. A lot of misinformation in terms of what the authority is and is not doing. So I think people just need to kind of understand that, right? Case in point, you guys approved us to do a bond issuance. And part of it has been that we are going, we're destroying the community in one thing. The other part of that is that we are, we somehow were authorized to acquire the site that we voted on, and we're planning to tear it down. Neither one of those is true. But that's the stuff we got to do. But that's okay, because we're going to keep meeting people halfway. We're going to keep doing what we need to do to make it a lot easier for folks. So I just wanted people to understand that the budget is filled with priorities, right? It is filled with a lot of priorities, a lot of good things that we really want to do, things people want done. It's going to take a little bit of time, too. I've been very transparent that the organization was built in a certain way. And in the way that everybody wants things to get done. And so we're working through that. So I thank Mike, Scott, April, all the managers for being very open to heat getting that feedback. Because the strategy is the strategy. It's the execution that everybody really kind of cares about at the end of the day and the result. So we have to make sure that everything matches up. Lastly, I want to say that, you know, some people chose didn't didn't like river views and chose water features with the sandal gardens in their office. And so this is that'd be Scott Pond's for anybody who didn't know. So, you know, that's his office in Tampa and what it looks like. But I wanted to say that this is got, obviously, this is last week with NRHA, if he transfers to the Tampa Housing Authority. And so I wanted to really kind of commend Scott in terms of the opportunity. But I also wanted to say that I appreciate you being a good working partner for the day I started before I started, you know, in part of this process. And I think you've helped kind of set us up in a way that will help us do great things going forward. Kim, you're the interim CFO, been in and out for two weeks. We got you back. And we will do what we can to support you through this process. And we will do what we need to do. Same thing, Ron. At the end of the day, we will do what we need to do. So we got a lot of work to do. You guys know that. But we're going to continue to do that. But I just wanted to say those things because it's important. We got to keep continuing to tell our story, because people are telling stories about our story. But we have but we have a good story to tell. And I want people to understand that we're helping with search assistance. We're helping with mobility counseling. We're helping in terms of moving the development forward. And so and it takes a lot of investment to be able to do that. And that's not just NRHA's investment. So that's how I'm spending the bulk of my time, is making sure that we get investment. We're working to get a meeting scheduled with the senior leadership at Virginia Housing. And so they were very gracious around that. We talked to a number of different lending institutions, because they were very much interested in what we're doing. And so I'm going to use my time widely. And I'm going to try to bring all the bacon. And I'm going to try to be a chief advocate for all the things that we need within the City of Norfolk to be great. Any questions?
CD, Sam? I was trying to formulate this question in my mind this morning as I was preparing myself for the meeting. This comes from a personal space, having worked with the agency for twenty and a half years. How overall, and maybe you don't have the answer now, is the employees, staff of NRHA, how is their work-life balance? How do the agency employees overall feel about? Because I know you've met with many of the departments and not all of them. I guess I'm an opponent of getting assessments and or information back on, you know, how we're how we're doing, surveys of sorts. Yeah, there are survey of sorts that may speak to how the employees of NRHA, how they're doing, how they're feeling, because we're going to be needing their engagement more and more. And I guess an organization is only as healthy as their employees are. Can you speak for that?
Absolutely. So I want to get to a point that we do an employee survey. I know April, I mentioned that too, but April got a lot on her plate. So I'm already going to answer the question for you. So you don't have to give a look or anything like that. But we do. But we do have to engage. And we continue to engage. We have our all staff meeting this afternoon. So and that's part of our continued efforts. I think the, you know, having to deal with the tragedy, I've never really come to contact with more people who have asked one another how they're doing, right? When it's normal to say, how are you doing? Right? And that's that's been the conversation. So I think everybody is at a reflection point where they're like, hey, I mean, there's more to it in life than, you know, what we're doing. But we're also dedicated to the work that we do, because we understand who we serve. So there's always that push-pull. And so we're always trying to figure figure out things to do and ways to continuously engage, because I think that that's very much important about people taking time. I think maybe something that people didn't quite understand, but probably are understanding, like we have this two-hour rule. I don't understand the two-hour rule, but we don't have the two-hour rule anymore. But but the two-hour rule was it was in place. And that's just allowed people a little bit of flexibility. And I said, okay, well, why don't we focus on personal time off? Right? I mean, so we only had one day under the authority for personal time off beyond what your normal vacation days are. We have three days now. We changed that from get ready to the two-hour rule, but now we have three you have three days to use. And so if there's about that work-life balance, I think the other part of the work-life balance, because people will scream that all day. But I I've been around it enough to know, like, your job's harder because your your process is convoluted. You made it hard, or someone made it harder for you. And so we're trying to get through that process where it's not convoluted. Now, I may say things that scare or may have scared half the people in this room and probably a lot of people in this organization. But if you keep talking through it and you keep seeing that there's a benefit to how it impacts your your day to day, more and more people have come to that realization. So and I don't have a problem really kind of explaining that. I think we will take, we will continuously take the temperature. We do that as part of, you know, the the all staff of people who are not bashful about emailing me or sending a message through somebody to get to me and or talking to other people frankly as well. So we just have to create that degree of environment. It's a change culture that we're in the middle of, probably that. It's a change culture that we're in the middle of, probably that the agency has not seen uh in quite some time. And so there's a lot of angst, uh there's natural, a lot of discomfort. And even when the people are like, hey, I'm overworked, I agree. Um, staff knows at the end of the day, but my solution isn't always throw more people at it because that's not necessarily the root of the problem. You gotta understand the root of the problem. Throw more people at it, you're just throwing more people at it. So yeah, I mean, we're gonna continuously work through that, to, to gauge that temperature. Yes?
Um, also, we have implemented um new hire check-ins. So we do thirty, sixty and ninety day check-ins now with all of our new hires. So supervisors meet with them, ask them um a series of questions. How's it going? How's your training going? Um, do you, so you have the resources you need to perform your job? At each mile mark, there's a different set of questions. They delve deeper into that. That allows the supervisor to um establish a rapport with their employees. And it also allows us to address any issues right then and there versus the employee resigning without us noting, being notified of what's going on. And all of those um new hire check-ins um come to me. I review them personally, and if I see any issue, I get with the supervisor and we have a conversation on how to move forward. Um, until we get to the survey piece, we're doing new hire check-ins. And we're also gonna do stay interviews. And stay interviews are um similar to the new hire check-ins, but it's with current employees who we randomly pool.
You said pool with that?
Stay.
Stay.
Stay. So we, we pull random employees and we ask them, how's it going? How do you like your job? Have you thought about leaving? What would make you leave? Just taking a pulse of the culture and what we need to change in different departments. So I think we're working through that until we are able to get to the formal survey stage where we um survey all of the individuals and see what the overall um areas that need to be addressed are.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I, I, I wanna make sure, I don't wanna deny you of your time, Scott, to do the financial update, but I also wanna acknowledge our interim CFO, she wanted to do the, do the report out for the finance piece. Or you can tag me, I'm, I'm just stepping away though.
Come on, come on. They need to hear your voice.
Thank you, Nathan, thank you. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Scott.
Ms. Perry, you can give me three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. It's, it, I, I wanna take three minutes or whatever, and I, it, it's time for me to say thank you to some folks. Um, when Ron Jackson gave me this job, um the people in this room, inclusive of Delphine, supported that. And that meant a lot because it was a tough time. We all remember that. Um, and, and that, that support from the folks in this room means a lot and meant a lot. Um, so thank you all for that. Um, Michael, I put you on the spot. But for, for the six months that I was your wingman, i- if you, if you loosely define the word fun, that was the most fun I ever had in my career. We, we, we had very little staff and we had, we had the support in this room. But, you know, we worked pretty hard to keep the lights on for a while there. And, and that was, that was great fun, Michael and I, you know, my friend back there, I, I thank you for that, for the opportunity. Um, I wanna introduce Kim formally. That was way less than three minutes, by the way. I wanna introduce Kimberly Green, who will be your interim CFO. Um, and the last thing you hear from me is, Nathan has my number, Michael has my number, Kimberly has my number. Don't be strangers. If something comes up, um, the, the normal housing authority mode of operation is that guy didn't know what he was doing? Well, call him and he'll, he'll tell you what he was doing, so.
Scott, this is our new CFO?
Yes, it is.
That's why she walked the way she walked.
She's in charge.
Came in this morning and she was large and in charge.
She's in charge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kimberly Green. I've been with the Housing Authority for fifteen years, actually. Um, stepping into this position, this interim position, um, I'm ready. I'm ready. Um, Scott has trained me well. Time here has trained me well. And um I will just say, as a new person coming in, trying to acclimate myself, I ask for your patience. I ask for guidance and be open to new and different things. Okay? And yes, Scott did the financial presentation with the budget and the office. He had to complete his test before he left.
All right, so uh with through uh the executive director's comments, we're gonna get to the departmental updates and begin with.
Yvette Thompson, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Happy Thursday. We're almost there. So today, I'm gonna talk about a survey that we did with our residents. This is as a result of our, um.
You were talking about what, Yvette?
A survey that we did with our, our, our resident's community needs. And this is as a result of um our public housing committee meeting with uh Commissioner Lewis and Commissioner Amy. Um, so we decided to do a survey. So we sent the survey out to every occupied unit that we had. And at the time of the survey, we had two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight occupied units.
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
We'll, we'll fact, we'll fact, we'll fact-check that. We'll make sure we fact-check those numbers.
No, we really had two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight occupied units that we uh submitted a survey to. And we got back five hundred and ninety-nine uh completed surveys. We actually got back more than.
How many did you send up?
Uh, two thousand two hundred and eighty-eight.
And you got about almost a quarter of those?
Yeah, we actually got more than that. We had well over six hundred, but some of them we, we just couldn't use because, for various reasons. So, but five hundred and ninety-nine um completed surveys. So that's actually twenty-six percent. Um, so which is, which is pretty good. So it, we, we did it manually, so it took some time to get the number um that we needed to move forward. So I'm gonna go over some of the numbers with you today. Um, as far as housing needs, we had fifty-three percent of respondents had at least one member of their household with a, with a disability or chronic illness. Thirteen percent said their home is not the appropriate size for their family. Educationally and career-wise, we had thirty-one percent of respondents wished to further their education or own a business. Fifteen percent of respondents are interested in receiving uh job search support. Supportive services needs. We had forty percent of respondents are interested in supportive services needs. Uh, we had seventy-three respondents specifically note that they were interested in homeownership. So we gave that contact information for those seventy-three uh residents to our client services as it relates to homeownership. Uh, we had seven respondents noted interest in uh domestic abuse support. And we, we gave that contact information to our uh securities director to reach out to them regarding that. So all of, all of the responses that we got, we, we, we're gonna forward that contact information to our, our client services department so that they can um address what the, some of the needs were. So as far as community engagement, sixteen percent of respondents volunteer in their community. Sixty percent are aware of the TMC and advisory councils, which is a good number, but we discussed with Julius, he, he wants to see that number higher. Uh, it's not a bad number though. And then the rest of it, we, we broke out, um, just to, just to tell you by community, what the response was. Our, our greatest uh percentage as far as response came from Sykes Midrise. They had seventy-two occupied units at the time of the survey and sixty of the uh residents responded for eighty-three percent. So hats off to Sheila Weddickow, she's the manager at Sykes. At Cottage Bridge, we had uh forty-five occupied units at the time and thirty-two residents responded for seventy-one percent. The Hunter Square, we had eighty-nine units occupied, fifty-nine responded, sixty-six percent. Bob at Midrise, eighty-two occupied, fifty responded, sixty-one percent. Partrae, uh a hundred and one occupied, fifty-six responded, fifty-five percent. Franklin Arms, ninety-seven occupied, thirty-seven responded, thirty-eight percent. Young Paris, six hundred and twenty-six occupied units for a, a two hundred resident response uh at thirty-two percent. Although they did have the highest number of responses, uh because they have the, the largest number of units. It's, the response was still kinda low there, but it was good enough to get a, a feel for what the needs are. So uh North Wellington, twenty-four occupied units, four responded, seventeen percent. Oakleaf, two hundred and forty-seven occupied units, uh thirty-four responded, fourteen percent. Brandy Village, three hundred and twelve occupied units, thirty-two responded, uh ten percent. Digstown, three hundred and five occupied units, twenty-two responded, and that is seven percent. And finally, Calvert Square had two hundred and eighty-eight occupied units, thirteen residents responded for just five percent. So that's the total of the five ninety-nine and the twenty-six percent. So this gives us the, um, this was really good. We, we learned some things doing this. Next time we're not gonna do it manually, we're gonna use a QR code because it'll be easier to get the numbers together. So it, it took a long time, um, because we did it manually, but we won't do that again. Any questions?
Is there something that you undertake uh on a regular basis?
We will going forward. This is the first time since I've been here, um, that we did a survey. Um, I, I think it is a good idea to do it periodically because, you know, the residents change, you know? It, it doesn't stay, it's not a constant. So I think we should definitely um do it regularly.
Yes, uh on our, on our committee, and I wanna thank Ms. Yvette and her team and staff for all the hard work uh that they put forward. Um, we talked about this uh on a few of the meetings and uh she went forth with her staff to implement the survey, to bring us back this information. So this gives us kind of a, a baseline uh data uh where we can truly begin to move forward, to engage more uh with residents and help and assist them uh in their needs on, and on every imaginable level. And so I had said to the board commissioners that at some point in time, we would bring this information back to report to you. So you'll have a general idea as to what is uh going on uh with the population of that we serve. So Ms. Yvette, thank you so much for those findings.
It's my pleasure. Any other questions? That's it for me today.
Thank you.
Elko.
Yeah, we have Pam. Yeah, we have Pam, then followed by uh Steve and Joyce.
Good morning, Pam.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everyone is doing well with the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We are excited about the new initiatives that our actual, our chairperson, our resident, our director has stated as we continue to ensure that Norfolk residents have decent, safe, affordable housing through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. I just wanted to share with the Commissioners and everyone, information about the Housing Choice Voucher Program, that it is not just a tenant-based program. Out of our members within the voucher program, we do have five hundred and eighty-five red project-based voucher units that are actually within our public housing communities, your Brandy Village, that are inclusive and included whenever we give our members for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So those properties are included in everything that is done for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But I did want you to know for the actual year of twenty twenty-three, the Housing Choice Voucher Program has been extremely busy. Throughout the year, we actually completed three thousand nine hundred and eighty-five annual reexams, which is the information that I did give you on the report. Two thousand eight hundred and fifty interim changes, with persons having changes in their income, et cetera. So we continue to assist our clients in any measures needed. We are extremely happy that we had six hundred and sixty new admissions to come on our program. So six hundred and sixty new persons came on our program and only eighty-five people that left the program. So that is a big boost with the program. Um, as Scott mentioned before, the more individuals that we put on, we actually bring more administrative fees to the authority. But our main focus is to house more people. We recently took applications to assist um individuals that will qualify for a mainstream voucher, individuals that homeless, near homelessness, are exiting the institution. And actually, at this time, still housing people, we are accepting applications for the Inspire at Church Street Project-Based Voucher Community, which is scheduled to start leasing up in the month of May through July. The applications that we are taking now for forty-five days is for former Tidewater Garden residents. We continue to have a landlord outreach where we're pulling landlords in. We are really trying to get a marriage with landlords with properties that are in high opportunity areas with low poverty. And the incentives hopefully within our next budget year will assist us in doing that, which will provide greater opportunities for our Housing Choice Voucher Program participants. We do have at this time, a Roland PBV RST, which opened up on April fifth, and it will close on May third, where developers may apply for a project-based vouchers. We also continue to work with the PBV properties at this time with, for the Tidewater Garden residents. We just completed the lease-up for Origin, I'm sorry, Reunion, which is a senior property at Kansas. And we are now in the process of leasing up for our former Tidewater Garden residence, Origin Circle. So we continue to, just am excited about helping the people have um affordable housing. We are looking forward to very shortly implementing the Inspire Inspection, which is a HUD requirement October first. And also, um Norfolk was chosen out of the HUD program to implement the small area FMRs, which we will have to do October first as well. HOPMA is coming soon, based on when our actual software will be able to complete and allow us to implement that program. Any questions? Okay?
You indicated that eighty, thank you.
You are.
You indicated that eighty-five participants left.
Yes, and. And right, and that's basically in the participations. Many of them were deaf. I didn't want you to think they just left. Many were over income, which is an awesome thing, which allows them that the families have become self-sufficient.
First, Pam, during the uh St. Paul Advisory Committee meeting, at some point, we had also been sworn in. Somebody told not to go back uh on the program. So when they leave Tower of Gardens.
Yes.
And that's a good thing.
And that is a good thing, and that is based on their income. They desire to be self-sufficient. So self-sufficiency is always a plus.
Absolutely.
And we have our programs here, like our family self-sufficiency program, which assists and guides people in becoming self-sufficient. That is actually a goal of the agency.
I agree.
Pam, um, I know you said that you guys are taking uh for Inspire, you guys are taking uh, uh, applications, things of that nature. Uh, when I look at this other waitlist that you have, um, I'm just asking from a religious perspective, because uh I think you have to page whatever it is. Uh, I don't know, but one of the pages in here has a waitlist.
Yes.
So you have some places like Cottage Bridge with eleven hundred people on the waitlist, Origin with a thousand people on the waitlist, Brandy Village has eighteen hundred people on the waitlist. Like, do those people not automatically just go to different areas where we have new, newer properties and become a priority? Like, why do you have to kind of, there's a thing like there's a waitlist for everything that we're doing? Maybe I, I know it's a choice, right? I know that's a model of the agency's choice. So is that why you have individual waitlists as, as such?
So for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. So for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, we do have an overall waitlist, which of course that number is three-thousand people. But with the project-based community, they're site-based waitlist because of course it's the individual's choice. So they can decide, oh, I would like to live at the Cottage Bridge, or I would like to live at the banks of Berkeley, I'd like to live at Church Street Station. When you're looking at the Church Street Station apartments, they are for homeless people only. So a lot of people apply, but once they are drawn from the waiting list, they do have to be able to verify the preference. So we have the Church Street Station, the Crescent Square, the Heron's Landing. Those are homeless facilities that are actually managed by Virginia Supportive Housing, where we, and we have offered them project-based vouchers to assist those individuals there.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I would imagine from what Commissioner Conde just described, a lot of those folks on the waiting list were several places.
Correct. Some people are on every waiting list, every waiting list.
So you got like one entry.
It isn't one entry. With the exception of like with the Inspire at Church Street, which is open right now for the forty-five days, only former Tidewater Garden residents can aspire this time. After we complete this application for the Tidewater Garden residence on May sixteenth, we will open it at that time for the general public as well to apply for Inspire. So there will be two listings that you will see at that time that will say Tidewater Garden Residence, and then you will see Inspire as well.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, any other questions for our excellent manager of our Housing Choice Vouchers Program and all the things that come with it? Any other questions coming in, Pam?
Thank you for your attention.
All right.
Pam actually has given me a great segue into a lot of my presentation also. Pam noted the Inspire, she noted Origin, she noted Reunion. All three of those projects are affiliated with our Choice Neighborhoods Program. Pam noted with Inspire, with the waitlist open today, or waitlist open for Inspire, and that's part of the Choice Program where we provide our Tidewater families first preference to get into the CNI project. She noted that Reunion, which is a seventy-two unit senior building, is fully leased up. We still have a few more, a handful of moves going into that property, but that will also be fully occupied by the end of the month. Origin, which has a hundred-and-twenty units, that's actually, it is almost leased up. It's about eighty percent, and we have families moving into that one also quite regularly. And we'll see that one probably fully occupied early next month. A big shout out to not just Pam and her staff, the inspectors, as well as the HCD staff. But this is also a huge shout out to Leslie. Occupancy staff has been critical in getting all of these CNI projects up and running and with getting folks in there, and so that was a hard loss. But big, big kudos to her staff because they've worked tirelessly with all the various items and issues that we deal with with lease-up, with our Tidewater families. We've got a great crew behind the scenes at NRHA that makes sure that we address a lot of those things. I do want to continue with some updates on CNI before I get to the developers forum, which I know everyone kind of talked about. Just wanted to note that earlier in the year, the city was getting, had a, had issued, or late last year, the city had issued the RFP or the thought bids for the Phase Two infrastructure, which is kind of critical for the next phases of the development, the housing development. Their bids came back in in January, early February, and they were incredibly high. So the city had to take a pause on that project. This week, they did approve the additional funding to move that project forward. So we expect them to issue the notes proceed for the Phase Two infrastructure in the next two to three weeks. That will, it pushes us back a little bit with our housing on the next two phases. But now we are looking to close with Phase Three in January of next year, and Phase Four should close in the spring of next year. So a little delayed, but still, still working towards getting everything done. Next, I want to note, we've got a lot of, a lot of things moving forward. As Scott mentioned in the budget and Nathan mentioned in his presentation, there's a lot of development activity going, going on. One of the things I want to highlight this month is the mid-rises Partrae and Sykes. We have the teams out to those communities this, this month. The architects, as well as our inspection teams, they will be there on the fifteenth and the sixteenth for both of those communities. And then we will be quickly following with resident meetings with our architects and with also with the NRHA staff to go over the RAD conversion, Section eighteen disposition process. The meeting with Sykes will be on the seventeenth, the meeting with Partrae will be on the twenty-third. So we are fully engaging now with the residents as well as moving that, those projects forward with the idea of ultimately coming back to the board for a RAD Section eighteen approval so that next year we can go for tax credits and begin a renovation project. Again, noting to the board, both of those communities, as well as the other two mid-rises with Bobbit and Hunter Square, although they have seen some renovation mostly in Oak, on the common areas over the years, they have not had a full renovation of the inside of the residential unit in probably since they were originally built. So these are our critical improvements that we need to make in order to keep these, these properties viable. So we had this thing earlier, call it developers forum. I want to first do a big shout out and thanks to everyone that attended. Many of the commissioners, y'all were there. And all I can say is we can plan, we can set up spaces. But in all honesty, it's the participants that make the event with, with the energy. So even though that we're still buzzing from the event, we are very appreciative of the energy that all the participants, the developers, vendors, the GCs, you all, staff, city staff, NRHA staff, all sorts of folks came in, really made those events. I got to do a big thanks to the NRHA staff. LaShawn, Christie, Joni, Anita, Radu, Shante, and Elaine. All these folks worked quite hard in getting and putting this event together, always there in the background as things were going on. As you can imagine, there were lots of little hiccups and issues throughout this whole timeframe. And I don't think any of y'all had to witness it or see it because it was just handled very, very nicely. So a great group, they did a phenomenal job. I can, and I'm sure Nathan was going to say more a little bit later down the road, but they did an incredible job. So the forum, and just for the group, what was it all about? So as we embark and move forward on our needs to radically transform our properties, whether it's the mid-rises, whether it's the, the family communities, the large vacant parcels that the authority has, we need partners. And so the idea of the forum was, let's go out. There are a lot of great folks out there that know how to do this business, that are on the like mindset of providing quality, affordable housing, and that want to be part of the change and transformation here in Norfolk. So that outreach to the folks was to bring, hey, we've got these opportunities. We're going to make it available. We're going to put out a request for qualifications that did go on the street on, on March twenty-eighth. A big shout out to procurement on, on getting that one out. And those responses will be due back May twenty-third, but we're looking for partners. And so there was a lot of positive energy from the forum. A lot of folks want to be, are, are going to apply and want to be part of this. They are quite excited about that. From here, actually, I want to, I want to turn it over to, to my commissioners from the Development Subcommittee. Again, critical parts of, of the event. Start with Mr. Fraley. Do you have any comments that you want to put as part of the, the forum?
Well, thanks, Steve. First of all, I'd just like to echo what Steve said initially. I think staff did a fantastic job just putting this together. I don't want to embarrass myself when I say how surprised, I guess, I was at the number of folks who turned up. At the reception we had over at the Waterside, we had great attendance there, I thought. But the next day at the Croc Center, it was literally a standing room-only audience. We had supreme support from city council, as well as city staff. The city manager was there. And whenever the mayor, the city manager, or council people show up, you've gotten their attention. And I think that was the important thing, and I think it's critical that under Nathan's leadership and staff support, that we send an early message to the city that we're about meaning juris business in trying to attract and move forward a lot of the initiatives that we've articulated previously. We have a lot of land. I was on the planning commission for seventeen years, and I can tell you, it wasn't even a meeting that went by that we didn't talk about vacant lots in the city. And Nathan come in and such a short period of time, galvanized a lot of the stakeholders from municipal government that are going to have to be involved in this. I think it's a yeoman's accomplishment to get that type of turnout and that type of support. And which is more, we have not allowed the flame of the ember to burn out. We've gone out open RFQ. I thought that was very, very timely in getting that out as quickly as possible, following up on the enthusiasm it seems that we garnered as a forum itself. And hopefully we'll get some, but that's going to be the proof of the pudding. Hopefully we'll get some significant returns on that in terms of those who are looking forward to seriously partnering with us. But from my perspective, I thought that we really lit the dynamite, if you will, in terms of bringing some excitement around what our potentials are in this city and how willing we are to partner with those in the construction and contracting and architectural communities to come partner with us to make this, to put some meat on the bones of all the ideas that we're describing. But I was enormously proud to be a part of it, and I'm equally anxious to see what the overall outcome is in terms of participation, man, participating in RFQ.
Always hard to come after. Always. But kind of to add to what Commissioner Fraley was saying, I was very impressed with the engagement, the turnout, staffs, how staff coordinated. Staff coordination was amazing. You know, one of the things that I got an opportunity to do is go around and shake some hands and just talk to some people, whether they were developers, contractors, the city. And if you just look at, you know, the overall engagement of the people and the look in people's eyes, you know, and sincerity around what we were doing, I think one of the, one of the more poignant comments that I heard from a developer was, I can't believe how transparent the Housing Authority is with all the stuff that they have. They're like, this is like, this is like never, they've never seen anything like this. You know, a lot of these deals are backdoor, you know, family, friend, whatever the case may be. You know, they're used to it being, you have to be connected to get these opportunities. And for us to just put it on the platter and say, hey, this is for everyone. This is an opportunity for all of us to come together. And not only create some excitement, but I think we created a sense of competition, right? Like, hey, you're not the only, you're not the only developer in town. There's, there's opportunities. We have some great people come from within the region. This is a regional thing that you talked about. And I think that was our mission statement as well, as a part of this. You know, we're, we're looking for regional talent, right? And I think we brought out some of the region's best talent in mind, you know. I got to speak with a lot of people who are doing a lot of good things within the region. It was just refreshing to see, I really kind of second what you said, Commissioner Fraley. I really want us to take this thing and run with it, you know, and get to what's next, right? I know we talked about earlier putting together a plan of action on how we're going to chronologically attack some of these sites and things of that nature. Looking for us getting there, getting some great work to the team.
Echo a little bit. So we had developers from Chicago, New York, Washington, Atlanta, as well as the region. So there were folks that thought that this was important enough to come well out from out of town. So we were, we were really happy about that. I think another thing to accent is when you looked at that room, some of the comments I also had was people were impressed with. It was truly a cross-section of folks in that room. And that was intentional, but it also shows where our industry has, has gone and is going. And the folks that are in there that are going to make a difference throughout, not just here, but in, in other parts of the country is that there is a, it is a wide focus now. And it's not just, as, as Terryon said, it's not just folks in the back room, it's friends of friends. It's, it's, it's a wide group, very talented group, a lot of great ideas, a lot of great work in other areas of the country, and we'd love to bring that into Norfolk. Another item I just want to say is the sort of a follow-up. So we've got the RFQ out, working on the game plan on moving properties forward. We do have some consultants we're working with on, on an evaluation of a lot of our properties and opportunities now to begin to tee those up also. But another part of what we're looking with the forum is we have our developers, but then there's another issue with local contractors and vendors about doing business with NRHA. So that's going to be another focus coming up in, in the coming months. We are working on another RFP, and this is for, for vendors and for, for general contractors across really the NRHA portfolio. So having a, a, a bank of folks, if, if our maintenance folks need it in public housing, if our professional staff here are getting a lot ready, or we're looking to, or in partnership with one or developers, if they're looking for contractors and builders, et cetera, we want to have a bank of folks that we can put out there and saying, yes, these are, these are pre-qualified folks. We know, we, we, we've already, you know, gone through the process with them, and they'll be here in that list, and we will have that, and we'll make that available to other folks in the community. As part of that, there will be training sessions. Big thing, we're bureaucracy, the city's a big bureaucracy. We have a lot of rules and regulations, and those can be difficult for our vendors and contractors to sort of navigate through. So as part of the work, but not just, not just putting out the RFP, we'll have some training sessions on doing business with NRHA, bonding, you know, access to capital and things of that nature, and sort of pulling in some, some banking partners and other folks. We're going to, again, as Nathan had said at the forum, what we're looking to do is build a very strong ecosystem in order to essentially deal with the affordable housing and the housing needs of our community. So we're going to continue on that work and see that as part of our mission too, sort of building all that up. With that, that's my report from the day. Any questions regarding the board report? I do have, just to call out, I do have a, a, a portion in the board report about the lease-up on Inspire, I mean, on, on Reunion and Origin. So if you want to see the numbers on how many folks have leased, how many people have moved in, how many folks of those are Tidewater family, it's in your board report. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. And we're doing a development committee, wasn't it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Julie Norman, and I'm going to give you a quick update of what's happening in client services. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Rose Arrington has left. I wanted to also say to her, thank you for all the services she has provided. She has always been supportive of anything dealing with a, a community engagement area, especially in, in Digstown, when she was the TMC president in Digstown. And becoming a commissioner, that was always excellent. And thank you to Scott, who's leaving to go to this beautiful site in, where is that area? Tampa? And then I will go here. No, I have to say this. Thank you, Mr. Nathan Sims, and to the board. Because when we're talking about the programs, especially that in community engagement and client services, we can't do it without your support, and we can't do it without collaboration and partnership. I was told a couple of weeks ago by someone, I don't know if I'm going to sound like this guy or not, the guy said to me, "And Doc, I want to go on the, I want to go on the mountain leaves and come get in the major league." We got to step you up, we got to step you up. Did I sound like anybody? Did I sound like anybody?
I wonder who that was.
So, that was, that was Commissioner Albert. I have to say this, I have to say, I, I'm on the, um, I am literally on the, um, Economic, no, Diversity, Econom- Equity and Inclusion Committee. And sometimes I'll say things, and I'll, and I'll apologize. Sometimes I'll say things and I'll, uh, write something that I know is not the direction he wanted to go into, and I'll put it up there intentionally because he gives me a history lesson every time. The reason I do that sometimes is because I don't wanna always be the person to keep saying, "Why? Why? Why?" So when, when we're, when we're doing things, he found a lot of times I'll say, "Why?" And it's because I need to know the history of stuff, 'cause when I see it, I can kinda build it into what we're doing. So sometimes I learn now how to write something off or leave something off, and he'll give me the history behind it. So the other day, I apologized to him, he said, "No, it's all right. It's nice that you get this." Pulling this, "No, Doc, it's all right. It's nice that you get the history behind it." So as, as we continue on in the client services area, I, I wanna say, you guys have an update of actually what we're working on, but one of the things I wanna say is that through the committees and through the help of what you do as commissioners, um, thank you for my education, and thank you for allowing my fire to continue to burn, because it's almost like me sitting in a room and you pull the blinds opener, open, and now I see it from a different perspective. Uh, so that's, that's what you do. Uh, Commissioner Albert Lewis being on that board, and I'm, I'm, uh, yeah, it's an education. So sometimes I'm like, "Do I need to have to go in a meeting 'cause you guys know so much?" And the reason I say that is because, as I say, you guys know so much, it helps us in terms of what we're doing with our community engagement. So I gave you an update, I'm gonna say this again, I gave you an update, uh, in your packages, but I'm gonna start it a little different by saying that, I still have a minute and a half left, Scott. I'll start off by piggybacking off of what Ms. Thompson said. Ms. Thompson talked about her surveys, and she talked about the surveys and what she collected data, and it went from, uh, community engagement activities to what our residents wanted and different things like that. And you actually mentioned, hey, I passed that on to, uh, client services. And we understand in client services, we are just servants, and we are actually here to provide the supportive services for our residents to engage in different activities for their upward mobility. So in, in response to that, we created what we call the core teams, and the core teams have always been in our, our communities, but these core teams allow our residents to, and help be empowered to provide their input in things that are going on, and we can listen to them directly. But most important, when we talk about those core teams, we have partners that sit at the table at the core teams to be able to help us in providing the services that our clients are actually saying that they want. Uh, so thank you for allowing us to have the information so that we can respond more effectively to our clients by providing the partnerships that we need to be in response to help make sure that they have the opportunity to, to not only grow, but engage in something that they say they want. Uh, I wanna actually talk about too, the, uh, food desert transportation. We put out, uh, an, an R F P recently for those who are living in Youngs, Calvert, and in Hunter Square. Uh, we know that they face food insecurities in terms of the ability to go to grocery stores, so we put out an R F P to provide transportation for them to go to, uh, the food, no, I'm sorry, to Walmart. And the reason Walmart was chose, out of those three communities, we received four hundred and fifty-one surveys that talked to us about what grocery stores or how often they would shop, if we had transportation, would you go? What, what, what areas, uh, what, what time of the day would you like to go? How many times a week? So in response to that, we put out an R F P, and, uh, hopefully we will have that in place by May the seventh, I'm sorry, May the second. And that will provide transportation for residents on Tuesdays and Saturdays to go to the grocery store in these three communities. And that will provide us an opportunity that these residents can have the response again by what they said to us from the surveys, that they needed to go shopping. And that would be, uh, hmm, I would say not only instrumental in terms of their empowerment to say that we are listening to them, but it's also an opportunity where we can show our residents that we do really care. So that pro- program is underway, and also in your, in your package, you saw something about the, uh, trauma critical incident, uh, piece that we're setting up what we call a twenty-three hour, um, I guess that would be like a twenty-three hour stabilization program. And a twenty-three hour stabilization program would allow, uh, uh, mental health professionals to actually work with clients right there on the spot for twenty-three hours to, to give them assessments and provide the services that they need within that time. Uh, gave you an overview of the core team, but also the grand opening for the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Clubs in Digstown have actually been closed now for over a year and a half, two years or so. And now we're looking at having them back online, and we're looking at having a grand open for them, uh, sometime in May, and we're hoping that that's gonna happen. We're just waiting for the final fire inspection. And at that point, uh, those core teams out in the Digstown area and Oakley, uh, are actually planning a huge grand opening. We're looking at different services that we have available to them. And on a feel-good note, uh, the last piece that you received in your packet was something called, uh, A Perfect Picture. Uh, The Perfect Picture was something that would come up what we call Behind the Lens. An old board member, uh, no, uh, Mr. Mustaccio, uh, had a friend who donated, uh, three, uh, digital and thirty-five millimeter cameras, uh, for, for personal reasons per se. However, uh, kids had an opportunity to meet with him, uh, that gentleman last week. And we're creating a, a program called The Perfect Picture. So this gives the young people an opportunity to use these digital cameras and take pictures of the communities in which they live, uh, whether it's what they see is positive or negative, but it gives them, it's more of a therapeutic piece, and it gives them an opportunity with those particular pictures that they can create a collage. Uh, why do we want that? Because that's therapy for the young people, but also it's engaging our young people. Also, also, through our intergenerational programs that people are picking up and, and wanting to be a part of it now, it creates that collaboration, it creates that unity piece, that they're working better together, and, uh, they wanted to actually host their own opportunity where they can talk to other young people about what they see in the community, and they're doing it through, uh, photography. And, uh, that's all that I have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, is, is the food desert transportation, is that in conjunction with New Virginia Majority, uh, they presented us last year?
Well, this one right here specifically with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, New Virginia Majority are familiar with the program, and they also, uh, was interested in looking and, and supporting us in soliciting, the soliciting the survey inform- information. But, uh, through the projects of, uh, our executive director and our deputy, uh, this is, right, this is actually through, through us. And, uh, we think it's, we, we, we know it's great because of the, the participation, and, uh, when you talked about the New Virginia Majority, they were instrumental in saying, "Hey, that was a great idea, they like how we were doing," so.
Okay. Now, last question I had, uh, we're gonna have, and this might be a question for the E D as well, but are we gonna have a level of, um, marketing or, first, Digstown reopening, that's a long time for us to be closed, so I know we're gonna have a, a grand opening, you know, we're gonna have news or some type of social media coverage that shows people, because I know we've had some negative feedback, you know, from how long it's been closed, with some mis- misinformation, so our goal is to get information back on the right track, or are we gonna have a level of advertisement, marketing, and things associated?
Commissioner Conyers, because I was limited to only three minutes. I could've spoke very extensively about that. However, we are, on yesterday, uh, we had a, a core team meeting, and at that core team meeting, there were, uh, the, in, in the community, there were the churches, the, the school system, uh, we had, uh, Norfolk Police Department, we had mental health professionals, uh, we had, uh, City of Norfolk, Fladbury, uh, workforce development, civic league folks, uh, who else did we have? So we had a mix of people at this, uh, core team meeting, and that's what they're planning, the, the grand opening. Uh, at this point, the reason I couldn't still give you a, an actual date is because we just know, don't know the date yet, once that fire inspection is, is completed. But they're planning the activities that we speak, and those, uh, partners who are there, we have an opportunity to talk about the different, uh, services that they provide, uh, food bank, uh, so that whole core team concept provides the opportunity that we, we'll have the partnerships that we need to respond to the different things that our, our residents that they're looking to have in their community, and, and actually help them to meet the goals that they set for themselves, and so we're providing supportive services. And we cannot, once again, we can't do it by ourselves, and we need those partners, yes.
If I just will very quickly, as, as a Christian friend, and, and perhaps add on to it and say, everything that you're saying here sounds amazing, and it is the messaging that we wanna get out, so I would echo that and push the fact that everything that, that you just talked about that happened, all those folks that are involved, everything that's going to be happening, I do think it's something that should be pushed out on social media, because that, that's the way everybody gets their information these days, and, and this is something that we, when we're talking about messaging, we talk about accurate messaging, about good messaging, I think this would be a great and easy way to get that pushed out, so I would just echo what you said, and it really pushes the, the social media aspect of it.
And, and it's being done, and as I said, we, we met on yesterday, and there's a specific, uh, a subcommittee that actually works on that and brings those ideas to the table.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanna tell you, needn't be embarrassed, your invitation on the term was spot on.
Oh, I did a good job?
Oh, yeah, you nailed it. You nailed it.
Thank you.
I, I did have a question though.
Yes.
You know, it seems that we be talking about this food desert issue, and probably Dick was a member. And, and I recognize that, uh, grocery stores usually make their decisions after they see bedrooms in place. Uh, you know, we've had Tidewater, Youngs, Calvert, uh, they've been in existence since the fifties, uh, and, and we've yet to even, uh, shall I say, attract, uh, a meaningful, uh, conveyor of, of groceries for those people. We're coming back now with, with, uh, three new communities, he said. Are, are there any ongoing efforts? I, I know we're not likely to, to hook a, a food, a purveyor overnight, but are there any ongoing efforts with us and the city and others that may, uh, be involved in, in attracting some, uh, to at least start enticing some of our food vendors who consider some of the locations? I'm just sitting here hearing you saying that, and as I draw my imaginary circle around where we are, uh, nearest grocery store is Twenty First Street. Uh, that's what, at least a mile away from, over a mile away from all of those. So, I, I don't know if it's the question, but usually is, is not for the board or the E D and, and the city economic development, but I feel like we need to have an ongoing dialogue with providers of food services, I'm talking about the traditional grocery stores, uh, to at least start now considering what we anticipate taking place over the course of the next three to five, six years, and hope that we might be able to hook someone in immediately that would be able to service, uh, the residents of what's only evolved from this, that possible.
Before Executive Director Nathan Sims answers that question, I was, he may sit at that table, uh, but I, I wanna say this, you, you're exactly right. Uh, when you talk about the proximity of where the stores was, you think those were questions that was answered on the survey. So, so when we look at the, the, the number of surveys that we received back, when we listened to the statement that you had, when we listened to the areas where we know that, uh, the food, food insecurities exist and is in the area where there's food deserts, there should be dialogues, uh, when, especially when we're talking about, uh, creating healthier and safer, safer neighborhoods, we know that healthier and safer neighborhoods are people who are actually eating well. We know that safer communities are, are actually when people are performing, sick people don't work. So we know, really, when we got people healthy, we create healthier communities because we have those different things in our communities. So I'll be refer that to the table that you may sit.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, uh, I, I would say that there, there've been different discussions, I think in different pockets, I think where we're moving now is more of a joint discussion, uh, because, uh, you know, a lot of this is based off incomes and rooftops, and so, um, that formula, you know, doesn't really change, and there's obviously a thin margin, but we, we, we are focused on bringing rooft-, you know, we have rooftops, and we're obviously looking to redevelop our housing and add additional rooftops, and, and so that's starting to become part of the conversation, uh, and we'll see where we can go. I mean, I even had a conversation last night, um, that, hey, you know, let's, they're, they have resources to, to kinda perhaps entice someone to come, um, you know, we have rooftops, we can talk to economic development in terms of their plans as well. So I think it's about, you know, the theme of this is probably like overall collaboration and saying, what are we doing to go, uh, be able to get, uh, the next visitor?
I have a comment on that, just real quickly, and, uh, just, I think the discussion for another time, certainly not today, but I do wanna kind of stake in the ground on it, because I think before, I've done some pretty extensive research on, uh, uh, food desert, and I think that there's a lot of solutions potentially out there, but things that states have done in some locality that I believe the most successful hugely revolve around tax credit and, and rent reduction. And obviously, that's something, like you said, that's gonna have to be done in collaboration with others in the area, but I, 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 I strongly believe that it is a huge issue, I think, as mentioned, it's getting rid of them to the extent possible, or mitigating is, is, is something that across the board affects communities in a multitude of positive ways. And I, I would recommend that there would be at some point maybe a, a, not an official committee, but a group that, that gets together and discusses actually how to advance the ball on that purely, because I really do think that it's something that, that is a problem that extends it, but it's a solvable problem, and that's what, uh, that's what I like the best. I like problems that are solvable.
Same here.
Um, and, 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 and there, there is a lot of, there is a lot of good data out there about that, so, um, um, I, I would just like to say, yeah, discussion there another time, but I think we should stay in the ground and, and set a goal to, to do something about it that is doable.
I agree. My, this is a strategic collaborative initiative, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's, it's, you're right, it's a complicated, a solvable problem. I'm not aware, and it could be, I'm not aware of, of, of any really successful, um, grocery store in, in a disadvantaged area that, that doesn't operate without missing something and stuff.
Yes, I mean, grocery store margins are so low already, they need to have.
Get a grocery store, then you have to keep the grocery store.
Yes.
And so that's not housing authority, not just the city, it, it, it's, I think, right, the city, the tier hospital, you know, the, yeah, I mean, and it, it ought to be, in my mind, a committed, focused, strategic initiative.
But it benefits, they're going to the streets as well, as it's all.
It, you know, because none, none of those entities can, despite resources and, and good intentions, people can do that on their own. You know, we can, we can maybe attract a grocery store here, but we gotta be able to make sure that they stay open.
Or that you can't do.
We can't do that.
You have sufficiently provoked a very interesting phenomenon and boiling. Uh, just wanna leave you with a little nugget.
Yes.
That it is said, uh, the speed and direction of a ship is not determined by, uh, the direction of the ship or the motor, but it's determined by the setting of the sail. And so that means how do you position yourself with the obvious discrepancies and, and things that impact this, I mean, but it's a lot of areas that meet food desert, uh, definition, but the people are able to overcome it, because they have vehicles, they have access to other kinds of, uh, uh, foods, they experience food in a different way, so, uh, it impacts an area differently. Having a food desert in a community that's extremely poor means that you're gonna get a bad quality of, uh, food, given with a lot of McDonald's and, uh, things like that.
That's right.
Thank you for, uh, your, for talking.
You're welcome. And as I concede my piece, I want you to know, we're gonna be able to actually take ninety people, uh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Norman. Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier, um, some surveys, I, maybe I got the number four, did you say four hundred and sixty-one surveys?
Four, I believe it was four fifty-one. We, we, yeah, we surveyed Youngs, Calvert, and Hunter Square. And from those surveys, um, we calculated the, the information, the data that you received. The data would have been that, information that we were trying to solicit. to solicit. Uh, how often do you go to the grocery store? So we did the average based on the info we got. What grocery stores would you attend? So would you go to? And we were looking mainly at the grocery stores that were on, uh, areas within like three and a half miles of those larger grocery stores. So some of the grocery stores that were listed on the survey was grocery stores as far as the Walmart on Tidewater Drive, uh, and also on Princess Anne Road, the Walmart, the Food Line, uh, the grocery stores that were in the Gant area. Uh, so those grocery stores were the ones that were in the proximity that was on, on the survey. How many times a week, uh, was up there? How many times a week do you actually shop? Another question on the, uh, on the survey included, how many kids are in your household? How many family members do you, do you have in your household?
Could you get me a copy?
Yes, sir. I can get that for you. And it's available right now and I can have it for you.
Thank you. And a quick follow-up and I'm finished. Um, the, the Grandy, not Grandy Village, the Young Terrace Food Distribution that you used to have there.
Beautiful.
Food Bank. I know it's, uh, helped by the Food Bank. When will that reopen?
When? Next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday. They, they're, they're stocking as we, well, for those who don't know, the, uh, the Food Bank had been closed a little while from, uh, the Christmas holidays. We made some, um, modifications in terms of, uh, getting the area clean, uh, and also some updating some, some things in, in, in the, uh, Food Bank. Uh, working with them, they're scheduled to open back up on next Thursday.
I'm sorry, you said the, the Food Bank, Food Bank?
Oh, yes. But we have.
So I noticed, you know, I mean, like, what is it? The First Baptist has a Food Bank.
Food, First Baptist has one, uh, St. Mary's, uh, they, they have one. We have a, a distribution center set up just like a grocery store that's available on Thursdays. And Thursdays you can go there from, uh, nine o'clock to twelve. It's actually set up for those who live in the St. Paul's area. Uh, so, uh, along with the transportation that we're providing, uh, to the grocery stores in which we've been actually, uh, serviced ninety people a week, uh, to be able to go to that grocery store, uh, the Food Bank is also gonna be open and provide services there as well.
Just, no, one last thing. Do you, you good?
Oh, I just wanna say, I said in the last meeting that when that food, uh, distribution Food Bank opened, at some point I'd like for the Commissioners, uh, Board maybe to meet, have one of our meetings in the community and maybe tour, uh, maybe take a tour of, uh, of Young Terrace because we were talking about marketing and messaging and there's a lot of plus things that's going on there. And I'd like to follow up and kind of keep that front of mind.
And, and as you say that, Commissioner Lewis, uh, in, in that Youngs, uh, Youngs Terrace, and I'm sorry for the, I said Young Park, because I grew up in that area. But in that Young Terrace, uh, service area, the service center, we have, uh, Boys and Girls Club who celebrated their first one-year anniversary on yesterday. Um, their, their celebration was on yesterday. And, uh, we also have a community health center in that facility along with the Food Bank. And we also have Crestar Mental Health Service Providers in there. So that multi-service center has a lot of activities that actually take place in there.
Yeah. I want the Commissioners.
The Commissioners. So I can set that up at, at any time. Okay. Yes, sir.
Last.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, let's, 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 let's.
Let me just say, Nathan, I mean, I'm sorry, Sarah, we're gonna hear it, but let's make this the last last.
It is the last.
Yeah, just, um, when you guys are doing that, uh, when you guys.
All right.
So when you guys.
Commissioner, that's the last thing you guys.
Yeah, right. So when you guys are, are doing the traveling with the, um, with the varying people, the, um, because of the Walmarts, just be in coordination with the stores as well too, because whether you have tenant or whatever, it's gonna impact quantity, right? And it could be, it could be an un, unforeseen influx in, uh, purchases at the store. You don't want people going to these stores. They don't have what you're on need. So I would be part of that.
Sock them.
And sock, yeah.
And, and addition to that.
Addition when the A O comes in.
Absolutely.
In, in addition to that, what you're saying, you're exactly right. We're also working, uh, our next level is working with the stores to make sure that there's particular sales. So we're flexible in, if we have to change the day of the week that we go, so that we have opportunities where they can use coupons or going on days where there are great sales and things like that. So, yes, all right. Thanks so much.
Thanks, sir.
My, my role here is, is honored because I always have the two factors. Committee report. So we, I have no committee report and for safety and community engagement and for A C D, we are working as a committee to align our efforts for some of the enhancements and changes that Nathan previously outlined. Thank you.
Alan, what, what committee were you assigned to? Okay, that's, that's, I'm thinking. Okay, uh, and now, uh, is that the last committee, uh, update? Oh, awesome. We get to go to the Commissioner's comment. Who's been commenting all along?
That's.
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, but we're all, we're all.
Yeah.
Meeting, Nathan, you told me this was gonna be a quick meeting and we're now thirty minutes past the average.
I, I can only be responsible for the, the authority personnel. That's it, that's it.
All right, uh, any Commissioner's comment?
Just certain.
None?
No.
Can we have sent a motion to, uh, bring Mr. Efron to a.
We don't need a motion.
Your turn.
We don't need a motion. You can adjourn.
We're gonna need a motion.
We got it.
Yeah, we're bound.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.